For September 7th, still the seventh I believe. Roll call please.
Ms. Born?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
If you're able, please join me in standing and saying applause allegiance. Applause allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republican Party's citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes of the City Council meeting of August 17th, 2021.
I believe everyone has received a copy of these meeting minutes. Um, I do wanna, for anybody who hasn't had a chance to review the ones in front of us, I did have a correction on there. Uh, the President of the Council reported it is on the ones that we have here now. Um, there was a misspelling of Kathy Moll. Um, that has been corrected, so, uh, with that, um, I would like to move to approve the meeting minutes for the City Council meeting held on August 7th, 2021 as written and dispensed with every reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Present.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Special reports, we have no special reports, letters, communication assistance, concerns, I think we just kinda did that. Um, ministry reports, the mayor, um, uh, just wants to point out, no report other than uh, the county is having a memorial service on September 11th and encourage everybody to attend that. City Administrator is not here, so has no report. Finance Director?
No report.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, when did you say that this September 11th event was and where is it?
It's at Wood County and the, I, I'm not sure exactly, do you have any information? It is September 11th, it's in the morning, I think it's at the county courthouse.
Thank you.
I don't have the exact information with me. Um, you have no report?
Correct.
Excellent. Law Director?
I would request executive session.
Uh, for the purposes of discussion.
I would request that one of you request an executive session.
I, I'm going, I'm gonna actually make the motion, uh, to go to the executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters as well as pending our imminent court action.
I accept it.
Uh, discussion, roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right.
Hulk, officer?
Hulk, um, yeah, let's go to basement.
So what basement, I mean?
Ten out of thirty-two.
Please, please.
Yes, sir.
Long prior.
Lots of flag, okay.
That flag, that would be involved.
Okay, that's kind of a, you know, they're useful.
You have sort of bigger session, I'm gonna talk to you after, or?
I'll just quickly, like, firefighter.
Yeah.
That's not the best.
He's a real guy.
Well, I just tell ya, they're, they're.
They're upset that.
They're not even.
They're inside guys?
Or they don't understand the.
It, it's, the, the weapon is, or, roughly off.
Okay.
And it's actually not even my crazy.
Cause we, we've been waiting, we haven't heard anything.
Oh, I've heard, I got five emails, so, just so you know, I mean, I got, I got nothing, you can do whatever you want.
And, and our biggest complaint I've heard is people think we're just gonna give somebody a gun.
No, 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 the complaint is, your governmental entity, I'm like, no, it's the union, I'll do whatever they wanna do.
Yeah.
They are, uh, they are, the perception is, we're encouraging.
The right bear arms?
Well, no, encouraging.
Yeah, if you're talking to them.
I, I know, I understand, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that that's some of you guys, I've heard.
I appreciate you telling.
So it is what it is.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, is this a good time for me to get a question to you about the previous one?
Yeah. Yeah, Fred, I, I don't, you know, I'm just, I'm just.
I appreciate that though.
Start without me.
Okay.
You know, one person goes, hey, they gotta come over to the house and she kind of emotional all this.
I like the laws, this guy didn't even, might exist because of his, uh, his ethnicity. I disagree off record, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I'm.
We're done, he can do it. I'm back strong. Fuck it up. See videos, I'm still on the ball, but I'm not sure, I, I have to make sure he's in place. I pulled them. I started to carve last week, I forget it. Four hours, not a few hours. And, um, I probably have fifteen different bucks, I've got a E7. It's got eight, beautiful on one side, the other side is, it's something, a baseball bat, it's, it goes straight up. Some of them, if they have a tip, problems, I have no idea why this would matter. Baseball bat, like, back here, left problems on the right side, the left, camera company, advice, I've never heard of it. Now, God, you know, you look at, the smallest, actually, tiny, very small, the biggest tire on the side, it's like twenty-five. So, I'd give this to you at least another two, three. I bet you from one of the chief, master, that's all I should, I guess, a little shot, all about it. Bunch of sixes, um, I think, four more bucks than that, I don't know. Yeah. But I thought I had many less. Uh, at night, and then mornings, it's been pretty hot, and it was ninety degrees, we were only getting his checks. Shut the door, they are out. Um, beside, you know, car going there, the, what's the one, Dums? Right in town, you drive through.
Oh, the farm?
It's, it's a dump, it's more, so if you go, yeah, go, um, it's not a big town, you know where the Fickers is? Where Lowe's, you get out that ace where Lowe's is. Well, hotels aren't.
It's in Lowe's and Meyer, like, right there, they got.
Yeah. Across the street from there, they have strip mall, so they got up to nine ninety-nine there.
Okay.
Forty. So I can see, it's up in front of my camera, so I'm around.
Yeah.
I have a fruit cut, shoot one. Couldn't see anything from that, but what happens?
Yeah.
I don't know, rain this year, but.
I think those, kind of the highway, you're in the, catch a catch, or it's, it's, it's up.
A lot of guys are hunting because you're up. A lot of platforms, coming through the highway, so, um, you're up.
Yeah.
I, I run a pre-starter, I love it, but, I mean, it's, uh, my name, there was, I'm serving, I put that, just, it's going, choose that.
So long nights, I just had to, have the comfort, I just sit down, I can't stand it.
Um, yeah, and this one doesn't have, they used to have, had to see them in the swirl and areas, reckon, you have to bring us to the others, if you want to sit for an eight. Yeah, they're way up front, left. And that thing is when I did it, eight years ago, for the stick, you know, stuff, the sticks?
Yeah.
So you, you go up the three steps, and then you.
Find a little bit, you go.
No, cause then you have to, we didn't, you put it on wrong, so it doesn't, it's the left, right, left, right, it was left, right, left, left, right, left, so, in the dark, you're missing steps, and so you have, this is, you should probably take this down. I had to redo all the ratchet straps, I read a lot, so I read ransom, very good, very good, I lost it. Sporting tree.
You are the only participant in the conference. Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
Yes, bye. I don't know, try to press. Want to take it for the gun rap? Okay, want to take it for the gun rap? I know something. I'm surprised we haven't heard any death threats.
You are alone in the conference. You'll be disconnected.
I respect myself. Got out, didn't do it? Yeah. Been a while? I've been there the last, probably one day a month, well, probably, yeah, probably the last, one day a week for probably the last month, but I went two months, I didn't work, I was just so busy. We're busy, starting to get some ammo back. You guys have notes for the, you've been had notes for the meeting today, sorry, I messed it up, I started it, yeah. You just got ordered on a bunch of stuff, so. That's right. So Tom, you sent me an email with all those data, I'm busy for every one of them, so you got, you got any else? Smiling, make a smash for it. I'll, I'll fight one over. I'm sure one of those people. What is it, a four hour? I think if this guy don't form, but if you, I have more than three, I can surprise. Okay. There's still the zoom, right? Yeah, it's virtual class. Okay. I can do that. Yeah, I just, I just grab it, I'll send it to him as soon as I get to the cabin, so I'll go around. So maybe what? With the next, uh, thirty days, we got all safety talks. That's hilarious, hey, what are they doing with, uh, fire prevention, the safety talk? Is that still a go? Yeah. Okay. So you have a person with it? Actually, we figured with all the, the ramp, the backup, we get an. He beat the school. So far. Week. Okay. Do you know what week it is yet? After, the week after. Is that, they've got a holiday, that means. Well, it depends on the, their testing, it falls. Uh. It's like, third grade, third grade testing or something, always called that. Well, it's fire prevention week, seems like it's a week earlier than it is tomorrow. It was called after, they're testing. No, it's always on the. Yeah. Just looking, we're supposed to get rain for next week? I've been blowing my water in two days, all year. So, I'm going to get to it, I ain't gotta worry about it. That's terrible. It's stopping. Happy you're doing it? Yep. I got weeds in my lawn hill. They just like the real, spicy bomb. I got dandelions and other stuff out there, I don't know, treat my grass as well, I just started. I'm gonna have to wear it whole night, three days. Yes. Great. I assume they told you guys about that answer? It wasn't, yeah. Well, you know, man, right, man, he. Softball? Yeah, yeah. That, that's her name, that's who called me. Right. They called me. Yeah. Last night, I'll get. It's a long way, man. Or a couple. Yeah, ask him where he at. Yeah, I think that, I know, yeah. Well, that's. That's just in, uh, it's elsewhere, it already comes in Europe, and it's on the downside. That's a great, yeah. Gotta wear the rest of this coat. Yeah, it's kind of, that's what I'm trying to do, it's on a, you, you. I said this thing, but nobody's saying, you know, about, we're not, we're talking about, so. This is my highest regular news, I don't know, from a financial network, let, let CNBC they don't have a, brilliant argument, I think, important. I should see how the best about it. Somebody's something I've got, I think, that makes you pretty much. This is funny, I'm aware, of course, I'm far, I'm, turtles here, on the same scene, and it's just funny, niches are famous, God, I can, the same story. Choke me at office for ten years, that's the point, yeah, that's one side. And just buddy. Something like, say. What's your crackhead? I think it may have kicked out, you also hold out, block, page my mouth. I think it may have kicked you out.
Okay, say it to it. Okay.
You're the only person that's, that's saying so. It's impressive, even, that was a great question.
Any chance I could have spout, uh? He could read it, not to stop out.
Yeah.
Okay.
No. I had a buddy. Yep, not happening.
Which one is it?
Uh, fourteen, I think. This one.
That's the, yeah, we can be sure that I'm not.
Sharp? Yeah. So, yeah, they go nasty. Keep cuddling her a little. They don't play.
Don't know if she's listed. Oh, certainly not in order, the one, um, I'll show you a picture.
It's last year, actually, I had to see her, I had her, I just got right, per, across it.
I think that was the stuffy shirt off.
Well, I jumped out. Stripped out of my freaking underwear, so I was on the bed, I mean, I'm so. I didn't just.
Sorry.
Probably hit me.
Like, tip for vice, for my last president?
No. You do not ever apologize to me, Jan. You got enough places?
Good, thank you.
Try to pack up now.
Enough?
What?
That helicopter, it was, nobody else was in.
In case you guys are curious, I did all of those, black guy, first calendar quarter.
All right, I'm, I'll go ahead and make the motion to come back to the executive session.
Oh, that's good.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
President of Councils report.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report, but I do have two, uh, resolutions here to pass, um, and I'll do them separately, just, uh, do the nature of each of the resolutions. So, I would like to introduce Resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty-one, and move the rules to be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution forty-eight, two thousand twenty-one, supplementing Resolution thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, related city construction, four to the city of Perryburg, tire station thirty-eight improvement.
All right, I move that Resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty-one, the S is an emergency measure?
Second.
No?
Not an emergency, I'm sorry.
Okay, that is an emergency measure.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right, and then I'd also like to, um, introduce Resolution fifty-three, twenty twenty-one, and move the rules to be suspended to allow for reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the city of Perrysburg to approve the city of Perrysburg in IAFF will. Resolution fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the city of Perrysburg to approve the city of Perrysburg in I A F F Local three-three-three-one. Fact finders report and declaring an emergency.
All right, I move that resolution fifty-three, twenty-twenty-one, be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Welcome to today. All righty, good. Hope you guys have the same result. Um, can do we want to do?
Personnel.
Personnel out of order.
I appreciate that. I let the rest of council know that I am leaving here in about five minutes, but I want to try to get these ordinances introduced. Uh, I have no report. Our next meeting's going to be the twenty-eighth, I believe, at five-thirty.
Are we doing it for reading or passing?
Five P, uh, we are going to do a, uh, vote on thirty-nine.
Okay.
So I would like to introduce ordinance thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only. And that is the third reading. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, and ordinance in meeting period for codified ordinances two-six-six point one-five dash one and two-six-six point one-five dash two.
Uh, I move that ordinance thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-one be passed. Second.
Discussion.
Just real quick, just, Pat, I hate to bring this on your board. Uh, I just want to make certain that, uh, some of the conversations, uh, were, uh, taken and put in in the final version of your passing, uh, more specifically in regards to that, uh, personnel is going to receive the information on the raises on a annual basis.
Right. Um, and the, a quick thing I'll say about this is I look forward to, uh, making a more cohesive and comprehensive plan and make it fit with our ordinances down the road and personnel's agenda, so.
I, I would definitely want to see that, um, move forward. I want to ensure that, uh, with these changes that, uh, um, those raises are made aware of to council, um, and, uh, that way we know what's going on and not saying anything again against the current administration. Uh, but, uh, as administrations change in the future, it's good for council to know, uh, what is happening with the, uh, the funds. So that's all I have to say.
Do we pass it?
Oh, roll, uh, roll call.
Is wait, real quick, is this supposed to be on, uh, law director? Do you want this? Uh, should we be doing this as an emergency? Do you want this in effect immediately?
But, don't see you.
No.
No.
Okay. Wait, wait. Just wanted to double check.
Here. That's our slogan.
Okay, well, that's good.
There you go.
Roll?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, I have two more ordinances. I would like to introduce them both together for their second reading. Uh, so I'll introduce ordinance forty-one and forty-two, twenty-twenty-one, uh, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-one, two thousand twenty-one, amending codified ordinance two-twenty point zero-seven of the city of Perrysburg codified ordinances, codified by ordinance fifty-seven, two thousand seventeen, and passed on August first, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance forty-two, two thousand twenty-one, amending codified ordinance two-thirty point zero-one of the city of Perrysburg codified ordinances, codified by ordinance ninety-three, two thousand eight, and passed on July eighth, two thousand eight.
We're just reading them.
It's ju- it's just a second.
Second reading, um.
I'm asking for no vote tonight, if you want to save.
That's what I was going to ask.
All right, so is there a discussion or no?
No, I was going to ask, we're voting tonight. That's what I was going to ask.
So I will present it next meeting and for a third reading and potential vote.
Thank you very much.
With that, my report's concluded. Thank you all, have a good night.
You too.
Good. Back to our normal programming. Very normal. See with us. Um, finance and economic development.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we did not meet, and our next meeting is a week from tonight, Tuesday, September fourteenth, at five-thirty.
All righty, thank you. Safety committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The safety committee met on August twenty-fourth, and the meeting was called to order at six P M. By Chairman Jerry Van Huzen, committee members present were Deborah Born, Mark Weber. Also present were, were Bridget Cabot, Kate Sandrello, Police Chief Pat Jones, and Fire Chief Rudy Ruiz. Citizen concerns, Barbara Wilch, two oh one East South Boundary Street, requested that golf carts be allowed in the city. I indicated that the committee would be discussing golf carts later in the meeting. The minutes were approved. And then the permission to purchase cardiac monitors. Ms. Sandrello stated that the fire division would like to purchase five cardiac monitors from Phillips at a cost of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. She said the current monitors are becoming obsolete and will not be serviceful, serviceable after the end of the year because of outdated technology. Mr. Van Huzen asked how old the current monitors were, and Chief Ruiz said he believes they are about six years old. He said they get used in almost, on almost a daily basis. Chief Ruiz explained that they tested three different systems, and this one is referred two-to-one by the firefighters. Mr. Van Huzen asked if this purchase was in the budget, and Chief Ruiz said that it was. Committee agreed three-zero to recommend approval of the purchase. Golf carts, according to the Ohio Revised Code, golf carts are considered under speed, are considered under speed vehicles, which are not allowed on the street unless allowed by the local community. The O R C al- also requires that an inspection be done to ensure that the golf cart has a windshield, turn signals, brake lights, headlights, and a horn before they are allowed on the streets. However, even if a golf cart has been approved, it still is not allowed on streets unless the local community allows golf carts. Committee discussed concerns about vehicles that cannot go over twenty-five, twenty miles per hour traveling on streets with a thirty-five mile speed limit. The Sandrelos asked if we can, Mr., Ms. Sandredo was asked if we can restrict golf carts to streets that are twenty-five mile per hour or lower. She said O R C section forty-five eleven, two-one-four does not say that you can limit it. So upon her initial reading, she would say, no, you cannot. She said that she will do some more research to see if other communities have done it. Ms. Wa- Ms. Wilch said that Bluffton and Toledo both allow golf carts. And I said their main concern is safety, and the committee will discuss further when they get more information. Noise ordinance, food trucks. Ms. Sandredo said that it had been brought to the city's attention that a food truck, that a food truck that sits on commercial product, property adjacent to residential property has a loud generator. She said that she does not think the mobile truck ordinance needs, needs to be changed. She said that in reviewing the language in the city's noise ordinance, she would recommend that some of the language be repealed because there is no method to test for, for vibration. Ms. Sandredo said that the city purchased new noise level monitoring equipment, and the police chief measured the noise level of the food truck that the complaints were received about. And the noise level fell within allowable levels. She noted that the mobile food truck owner bought a new generator. Val Parrott, three-one-three Elm Street, said that this issue has been going on for two years. She said that she would like the food truck legislation to be amended to not allow food trucks adjacent to residential areas. Ralph Wyland, three-fifteen Elm Street, said that there had, has not been a lot of effort by businesses to try and mitigate this. He said it affects his health, it is annoying, and he had heart surgery four years ago. Mr. Weber asked if, if it was better when the food truck was parked on Third Street. Mr. Wyland said that it was better for the residents on Elm Street. Mr. Weber asked that the issue with it being on Third Street is that it was parked in the wrong direction and was serving to the side street. Ms. Cabot noted that many residential areas employ food trucks for parties and events. There was discussion about issues with plugging into business, businesses because of cords and mismatched electrical sources. Ms. Sandredo said that Chief Jones has pulled some noise legislation from other communities with rules regarding activities adjacent to residential areas. She said this is the best place to start to look for a solution without causing unintended consequences. Ms. Barnes, Ms. Born said that the food trucks should not be in areas adjacent to residential. They should be at Country Charm, Fort Meg shopping, and downtown. Mr. Mr. Van Huzen said that they will continue with the process. Ms. Weber and Ms. Born said that they would keep the residents updated. Downtown parking. We, we had received emails from downtown business owners regarding employees of other businesses parking all day long. Ms. Cabot said that there was, was a change regarding law enforcement not being able to chalk or mark tires, so this issue pops up every once in a while. Ms. Cabot said that the city could add more parking on West Second Street, similar to what was done with East Second Street, but we can't regulate who parks there. Chief Jones agreed that the U S Sixth Circuit made it almost impossible to enforce parking limits. Mr. Van Huzen said that he wanted to be, wanted this to be on the agenda to speak publicly about our options, but our options seem limited. It was a brief discussion about how to better market the available parking in the downtown area. School speed zones. The issue of a school speed zone on Louisiana Avenue near Seventh Street was raised by Mr. Weber. Ms. Cabot said that she was still working on it, that there may be, there may be a workaround that would allow a school speeds, speed zone in that area. She, she has a sc- a call into school superintendent, Tom Hostler, to discuss it with him. Chief Jones provided the results of a stealth speed study done in the seven-hundred, eight-hundred block of Louisiana. He said that the average speed of traffic, both northbound and southbound, was below the posted speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour, but there were some outliers. Mr. Weber asked Chief Jones what he thought about a school zone in that area. Chief Jones said that if, if there is a simpler way than what is laid out. In the Ohio Revised Code, it can't hurt. Under other business, Ms. Born said congratulations on the new officers and promotions in the police division. There be no further business. The meeting was adjourned at seven twenty P M. We do have a resolution. I would like to introduce resolution forty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, move the rules be suspended to allow for reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman? Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution forty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Phillips not to exceed one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents for the purchase of five new heart monitors for the Perrysburg Division of Fire and declaring an emergency.
I move that resolution forty-nine, twenty-twenty-one be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
And our next committee meeting is scheduled for September twenty-eighth at six P M. That concludes my report.
Very much. Preparation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have no report. Uh, our next meeting is Tuesday, September fourteenth, at six-thirty P M. Um, I do have one comment from some people, they keep asking me about the pool. Um, if it can be open longer, possibly past August fifteenth, maybe on the weekends. I've had several people ask that question. Into, uh, Labor Day.
Been, uh, certainly happy to look at that, but the two, there have been three issues. One, um, most of the lifeguards are couch toons and leave in early to mid, um, August, and so the staffing, um, although there are some very. There is a, it's very small, mine, I, finite group of people who have used the pool in the past, after a particular date, it, it becomes a little bit cost prohibitive for the, um, uh, to be open because not getting use. I happened to walk by there, even on some very nice days last week, and there were a couple of people in the pool, uh, even during particular hours on the weekend. Um, lastly, the, uh, the Y has an agreement, and it has a head public aid staffing after the start of August, so we're happy to look at that. It's happy to be something that the direct committee can discuss with the Y when we come to coming, uh, next year, but it's been an ongoing, uh, issue to have people to provide, uh, service.
The question that was brought to me was, I think Bowling Green does this already. They go into Labor Day weekend, they just, like, on the weekends now. That's what, that was the question they had because of the hot days we've had, so.
We've had the same problem, we had the same question. The direct committee can take it up with the Y, um, also with the cost and the, when that, that's discussed, but, um, and it is certainly an issue. We'd like to be able to provide the service when we can, but again, it's still a staffing issue. Those stu- the students who are college who, um, who, who are qualified under the lifeguard standards to be, to work, to work the pool, uh, leave at the start of August, so. They don't come back on weekends and make themselves available to do it. Uh, but we'll ha- uh, happy to take that into consideration.
That would be great.
Next year.
Thank you.
Planning zoning, has no report. There's only one person left.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm the lone city member here.
This is like a great planning zoning.
That's right.
You can make any changes you want.
Has, has been announced a couple of other occasions, the, our next scheduled meeting, there is no report, but our next scheduled meeting is September fifteenth at five-thirty.
Block off some time. Thank you. Uh, personnel, we already did. Public utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do have a report here. Uh, we met on August twenty-fifth at six-thirty-one P M. Uh, myself, as well as Ms. Matroni, we're present. Also present was Ms. Gossi, Director of Public Utilities. Uh, I'll skip through some things that are routine. Uh, we had authorization for the Ohio Public Works, uh, application round thirty-six. Ms. Gossi requested authorization to apply for a grant from the O P W C. Ms. Gossi said that we apply for this grant every year, but this year we're applying for the grant for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, I, the, uh, digester is what I'll just call it. Improvement project. Uh, this includes replacement of the biogas flow meters and replacement of the boiler and heat exchanges. The construction estimate is five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and the grant application is not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Committee agreed to, oh, to recommend approval of the grant request. Uh, we had a sewer credits tabulation, uh, which, uh, there was only two hundred and seventy-six dollars in this last one. Uh, another business, uh, I had asked about, uh, the fixed base system is coming along. Ms. Gossi said they have done a P O for the fixed base box and have identified five locations to start with. They had a meeting with a meter manufacturer and said they could start getting some information for the system by the end of the year. Uh, for those who aren't aware, this is a way for residents to be able to have up-to-date, accurate, uh, meter readings whenever they log in. There was a brief discussion about the grant application for Ohio Department of Development. Um, then, uh, I had mentioned regarding the water tower on one ninety-nine and the logo, and, uh, just some more feedback on that. Uh, we had followed up on the home grants that have been applied for it, and there have been five so far this year, which is up from two last year. And, uh, we do have to have a conversation here about our meeting, and since Mr. Van Huzen's here, uh, in November, uh, it is right around Thanksgiving, and I was hoping we might be able to try to reschedule the November one, uh, before I get into any of the, are the only resolution I have on here. Um, our next scheduled meeting is still scheduled for September twenty-second at six-thirty P M. But if we can, uh, move that November one now, because there's going to definitely be some things that'll be coming up, it would be appreciated by the administration.
The twenty-ninth to thirtieth would both be okay with me.
Okay, why don't we tentatively say, uh, the twenty-ninth at six-thirty?
Okay.
Ms. Matroni?
Um, yeah, never mind, there was a dot on my calendar, I want to make sure it wasn't something in front.
All right, so, uh, the November was going to be November twenty-ninth at six-thirty P M. Uh, I know Cory's not here to discuss the service, so we'll have to do that the next service committee meeting. We thought about trying to do everything.
Yeah.
Today. Um, so with that being said, I would like to introduce resolution fifty, twenty-twenty-one, and move the rules to be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution fifty, two thousand twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State. in Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement program, specifically by authorizing the mayor to take all actions legally necessary to prepare and submit an application for the program and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
All right, I move that Resolution fifty, twenty-twenty-one be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, that is the end of my report.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit of a.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Pass some of our bedtime. The Service Committee meeting was held August twenty-fifth at five-thirty-three. Chairperson, Ms. Matroni was present. Also present was Cory Coleman, and eventually Jonathan Smith. Four minutes later, Bridget Cabot and Kate Sandretto. There are some citizen concerns regarding multi-use path and some clarifications on that. Approval of minutes were approved from July twenty-eighth. Purchase of surveying equipment. Ms. Sandretto said that the new city engineer has surveying skills. She requested approval of purchase of surveying equipment for the engineering used for the design of water and sewer line replacement projects, multi-use fast traffic signal projects, et cetera. Cost of equipment is thirty-two-thousand, thirty-one dollars, eighty-six cents from precision laser and instrument, which is less than the cost through the state purchasing program. Committee agreed three-to-one to recommend approval of the purchase. ADA improvements to downtown Phase One contract. Ms. Sandretto requesting approval agreement with Fishbeck and the Mount Knatchet seat, forty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for survey and preliminary design work necessary for Louisiana accessibility project. Ms. Cabot explained that this is the first phase. Design firm will give us options, and once we choose an option, then they will give us prices. There's discussion about the involvement of the business owners. Ms. Cabot said that the owners have been invited to three meetings, but they were not well attended. Mr. Smith said that he realizes we have to make it handicap accessible, but he is concerned about the drastic changes such as loss of parking. Ms. Cabot acknowledged that there would be drastic changes. Ms. Sandretto said that this is federal law and that this is our only effort to use municipal land to address the issue. She said that she understands the concerns, and the goal is to find the best solution. Ms. Cabot explained that once they have the design choices, they will invite the businesses back to the table. She said the city cannot go past the face of the building, and the assessments have been shared with the building owners. Mr. Smith said he would like to limit the impact as much as possible. The committee agreed three-to-one to recommend approval of the contract with Fishbeck. Other businesses, other business, I'm sorry. Mr. Smith asked about the cleaning schedule for the restrooms at Woodland Park, trash cans of the inclusive playground at Rotary Park, and speeding in the lot, parking lot at Rotary Park. Ms. Cabot said that she was bugging the mayor about the parking lot at Rotary that day, and they're looking at curvy. Mr. Smith also asked about pedestrian signs for multiple locations. He said the bridge on West Brook looks great. There be no further business. Meeting adjourned at sixteen-thirteen. Respectfully submitted by Jan Matroni, Chairperson. Next meeting Wednesday, September twenty-second at five-thirty P.M. I have two resolutions I'd like to introduce at this time. I would like to introduce Resolution fifty-one, twenty-twenty-one, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second, third readings.
Second.
Excuse me, did Jesus do them one at a time?
We are.
That's what I'm doing.
Perfect.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-one, two thousand twenty-one, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with precision laser and instrument E not to exceed thirty-two-thousand, thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents for the purchase of GPS equipment for the Perry'sburg Division of Engineering and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution fifty-one, twenty-twenty-one be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.